Good afternoon, everyone. We do have a quorum. We can begin with the roll call. Chair Edgar Chase the fourth.
Present.
Vice Chair Andrenika Morris.
Present.
Secretary Treasurer G Wade Wooton. Board Member Giselle Johnson Banks.
Present.
Board Member Charles Brown. Board Member Stephen Smith.
Here.
Board Member Hunter Thomas.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Well, let's get started. This is the Finance New Orleans Board of Trustees Meeting for May 25th, 2021. We did the roll call. We're going to start with the old business, starting with board insurance. Not if Naj or you or Byron is going to give us that update. And before that update, I just want to make sure we did not, and I think he's coming back on, Mr. Brown is still on, right? Yes, I see him. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, who's going to give us that update on the board insurance?
Naj, you there? So in terms of the board insurance, I'll give the update. The, so we do have currently a public officials board insurance policy in place, has been in place for a few years. And so we've been reviewing that insurance policy just to make sure we have a full understanding of the coverage as it relates to the, to the board members. And so we did, we did provide legal, a copy of that policy for their review. And so once they review that and we confirm the comprehensive, you know, items that the coverage that the policy covers, we will send that out to the board members for review as well and confirm that.
Okay. And Mr. Brown, are you here?
Can you hear me now, Chairman?
I can hear you now. Yeah.
They're good. Okay. Um, there is a, thank you for the opportunity to say a few things about the board insurance. I'd been asking for it for some time, but there's a rationale behind it. I've been associated with the authority for over close to 20 years now. And I consider this as being one of the most, very most important meetings that I've ever attended. But I'm looking at the roadmap and insurance is critical because the Finance Authority of New Orleans will be a critical, critical entity in the future for the city of New Orleans and looking at this document that the board is going to consider later on. The insurance is important because it gives us liability protection. We will be doing business with a lot of limited liability corporations. Hope, hopefully, most of them are diverse in nature. That's my hope and wish and desire. But along with that, they have limit to their liability, but ours is a role that will be critical to the city of New Orleans and its development. Specifically what I'm talking about is that once this plan is put into place, we will be the responsible agency for the resiliency of the city of New Orleans because we'll be providing, number one, jobs. And that's why I asked Mr. Chairman for the disposition statement or the HUD one from the properties that we have closed. Why would I ask for that? It's because I'm hoping that we have created jobs with those acts of sales. I'm talking about professional jobs, appraisers, title insurance companies, everything that is involved in that transaction. Then we move on to other jobs, the construction jobs that are created as a part of that activity. Those pilots, pilot payment in lieu of taxes. That means that we are responsible for and are giving, not giving, but using as a credit enhancement tool for developers, the taxes of the citizens of New Orleans, avalourum taxes, the majority of which are used basically for schools. The majority of our avalourum taxes is used that way and 10% is what we calculate that as being as a real estate profession. Like I can tell you that if your properties are praised for $200,000 and you're going to be paying $200,000, $20,000 in taxes. But the insurance is important because if there is an error by our professionals, title insurance, if there is an example, I mean, a mistake by the developers of which this, I hope they're diverse, that if that is a mistake, that the Finance Authority of New Orleans is not brought down, that the board, along with the staff, is protected. And that we as a viable agency, especially if you look at the roadmap that's will be provided with later on, we are the intimate industry element for the city of New Orleans that will move this program activity for affordable housing and climate activities in the city of New Orleans. So those jobs are there. We don't want anything to happen to the authority. And that's why we ask for the board insurance. That is on the pilot side.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
If it meets your pleasure, we have gathered the board insurance information. I'm going to entire policy to you under a separate email, in fact, to all board members. And just so you know, if there are any questions, I'd like you to gather them so that I can liaison between the organization and our insurance broker. I will tell you that based on the actual policy.
Yes.
There is also a $25,000 dishonesty bond with our insurance carrier. I think you, I think what I have is what you're looking for. It's 30 something pages, so I'd like to put it in the mail to you as opposed to sending it to you to look at on your screen. So that will go out, that information will be disseminated to all board members after this meeting. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to assist as far as getting your questions answered directly with our insurance broker. Okay?
That's fair with me. I'm not an insurance professional. I'm only asking that we protect the agency and its liability, especially when we, especially when we take a position of ownership. There is a liability exposure there for this agency. And what's most critical, what's most critical is, is, is the staff as well as the board is, and the agency is protected. That we remain a viable entity in the community and not suffer any liability that would put us out of business.
Yes, and I, I do believe that once the board has a chance to review the policy, I think, in fact, I want to say 95% certain that the clauses and stipulations in our policy cover exactly the, the items that are concerned of you as far as with the owning of properties going between us and the developer, the staff and any board members. So I'd like to reserve further conversations about it once all of the board members have had a chance to actually review the policy.
Would you highlight out those items that you just reported today would give us that protection? Because you've said it's a fairly large document.
Yes, it is.
So, so what I, what I hear, the action item from this one is going to be Naj's. You're going to send that out to all, we may send a copy to you, Mr. Brown, maybe not electronically. Also, what I want you to do and any other board member is write those specific questions down. Cause I think Naj, you stated, we have a chance to go back to our insurance carrier and make sure that if there's a specific question that is addressed, that we make sure we have that coverage for. And if it's not, see about how do we get it or if we even need to get it. So that, that, that we can follow up. So if there's no any discussion, more discussion on that old business, we have those action items. We're going to move forward to the consent agenda items. Has everybody had a chance to review the board minutes from April 27, 2021? As well as the Finance New Orleans Programs Committee meetings from April 20th, 2021? And if, if we have, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Some move.
Second. Oh, buddy.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. So all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now we're moving on to new business. The first item up is going to be the change of the boarding, board meeting date. I believe we're moving it from the fourth Tuesday to the fourth Wednesday. And there's a good reason behind that. If Ms. Morris, you want to chime in and enlighten the rest of us on, on that, that movement that we're asking for.
Sure. One correction, we did not determine that it would be a Wednesday. We did a doodle poll. Wednesday did not work for one of our board members. Like I strongly urge that the board members visit the doodle poll that we proposed so that we can get a collection of dates that works for everyone. Thank you.
Got it.
Yeah, we may be able to make a suggestion with us on the call, but we're missing somebody. So just a heads up to everybody, you know, our meetings normally used to be on Tuesdays. And we've moved to the fourth Tuesday, which puts us in conflict with our partner, the Housing Authority of New Orleans. They are in fact having a board meeting right now. And we're going to be talking more later in the meeting during Programs Committee and during the Executive Director Report about things that Finance New Orleans is going to be doing more that how we're working, deepening our relationships with the Housing Authority and other agencies. And it's, this is going to be a challenge with us having meetings with them at the same time. It is going to make it difficult. So we, the staff has sent out a doodle poll to try and get it moved. Chair Chase and I and the, and the Executive Committee tried to come to some resolution, but we found out that that didn't work. So we really need everybody to complete the doodle poll so we can find a new or a new, and we had also talked about a new time, right? The staff would like to keep the meeting on the fourth week of the month to give them the chance to get things ready. So that they have three weeks during the month to do, they'll still have four weeks between the meetings, but they'd like to have three weeks during the month to prep for the board meeting. But you know, we, so that means Monday, that Monday, that means Monday, Tuesday morning, Wednesday at some point, but we heard Wednesday is not going to work. Thursday is really not a good idea because we'll bump into City Council, no matter what, you know, week we pick and Friday. So we need to come to some resolution quickly. Nope, that's it. So we can, if we, everybody can complete the doodle poll or we can get this moving.
Thank you, Chair Morris. So, so with that, please go and finish the poll. Naj, when, when we did the poll, and I'm trying to remember if I picked a Wednesday and let's say Wednesday doesn't work, that were we able to pick the next best option or do we have to send out another poll?
No, sir. I sent out a series of options. So definitely if that Wednesday, I think I also proposed a Monday and a Thursday. I know absolutely Friday is not favorable.
Right.
For members. So, and if not, we, we can actually, to meet your pleasure, Mr. Chair, we can look at the, the third as well.
Well, if we can, once we leave this, this meeting and finish up the rest of this week, if everybody can go in and just kind of quickly answer that doodle poll so we can know where we're going for the next board meetings and, and get that done with. All right. I think, I think we've passed that. Were there any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Dame.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Board Member Morris just stated. There are other partner board meetings going on at the same time. Housing Authority, New Orleans Redevelopment Authority, Louisiana Housing Corporation. And you know, even different city, other city agencies. So we are coordinating with them quite a bit, particularly on the housing side. So it is important for us to have dates that don't compete with other agencies. Number one, to give the public a chance to, to attend both meetings. And then also, you know, many times we depend on the same consultants or group of professionals. Mr. Brown mentioned a list of professionals that are engaged in any particular project. So that, that could create conflict, not that we should do everything around, you know, just certain stakeholders. But I do think it is important for us to have our own day where we do our board meetings that aren't in competition with any other agencies. We won't be able to avoid, avoid conflicts altogether. But if we can avoid conflicts with other housing agencies at least, I think that would put us in a good position. So I just wanted to provide some background to what Board Member Morris said.
Got it. Thank you. All right. If there's no further discussion on that, we can move on to item five, which is the Programs Committee Report from April 2020. Well, that's from May, right?
No, sir. The May minutes have not been accepted by the.
I got you. Yeah, yeah. From, from the April 2021.
Yeah, month.
Got it.
Well, for clarity, Board Member Chase, are you talking about item number five where it says April 21?
That's correct.
Yeah, well, the minutes above that Naj is referencing were from April, but I think what you're saying is the the Programs Committee report is from this month. So we did me, yeah, we did me yesterday.
Oh, yeah, we did the consent agenda. I'm sorry. That's right.
So I think that's why we're on number five. You can give us an update on that Programs Committee Report.
Right. So good afternoon again, everybody. We had Programs Committee meeting yesterday. It was a little tight, but, and we've got a presentation for staff, but I just want to do a quick overview over the things that the Program Committee discussed yesterday. We talked and got some information, more information from the staff around the Community Support Fund. And so total, there's been $50,700 total awarded. It's all been rental assistance. And so the staff wanted to reallocate the utility dollars to rental dollars. But we thought it was more important to talk about, we were not able, we were able to determine that there wasn't real, there was enough clarification around the difference between the utility program and the rental assistance program. So we wanted to give particularly homeowners who might be struggling to pay the utility bills, who could be prospective clients for the green mortgage products that the staff is going to be rolling out soon, give them the chance to apply. So the staff is going to come back and give us an alert on, an update, I should say, on how that is moving. So we decided to table the reallocation resolution. So we won't be discussing that today. And then the rest of the Program Committee Report, we talked about the Own New Orleans Program, which is again powering down. And it soon will be replaced by the Finance New Orleans Green Mortgage Program. And but there's been minimal activity. And I was wondering, did we want to go through and show every, everybody, I know everybody has their, the board members have their report, but I think we should show the public, the summary, the dashboard of the document. So can we share the screen and show those?
Are we going to be allowed to?
Naj, you were saying something?
Oh, I had a, I had a question to ask you, Chairman. The homeownership portion of this.
The utility, the utility payment, the utility payment proportion.
Right. Would you go over that with us? Because I know we've had this gear toward the tenant. But now that it has been expanded to include, maybe it hasn't been expanded, it's been there all the time. Of course, get the person involved in the green mortgage program. But is it modeled after? Because I looked, I know that the city has it and you're an expert in it. Would you go through that and explain to us how we can tell a citizen how they can take advantage of it as a home?
That was part of the conversation that we had with staff yesterday. There has not been a lot of application for utility assistance for people who would qualify for it. A lot of the renters who have come in, and again, we are targeting specific kinds of renters for the rental assistance. We're trying to target people who could become first time homeowners. So these are not going to be renters who've been out of work for months, right? As many people have been, these are folks who've hit a bump. They may have hours cut, they may have had unexpected expenditures, a number of reasons why they need rental assistance, and they would be a good candidate for either the Own New Orleans Program or the Finance or the Green Mortgage Program, a number of different things. And the utility assistance has not been tapped. And so one of these that we had been talking about was, did people know, like when you, the way it's been advertised, it says rental assistance and utility assistance. And we were concerned that homeowners didn't understand that they too could apply for utility assistance, right? Because it is eligible and particularly it gives us an opportunity to talk to homeowners who are struggling to pay their utility bills during COVID and say, can we help you with a green mortgage product that will help you affect energy efficiency upgrades to your home that might lower your utility bill in the future? And so because we thought that, and to your point, Mr. Brown, you said it, like, how do homeowners know? And we will, we will, because of the way it's been marketed and they've gotten people for rental assistance, the fact that they haven't gotten anyone, any homeowners to ask for utility assistance, let us know that there might be another opportunity to just go back one more time and let homeowners know that if you're in trouble, and we've got some places that we can go. Staff has some places they can go. For example, the United Way has opened up a, a homeowner's assistance program to help homeowners pay their mortgage. And so working with those partners as well as other panel partners, the staff work with counseling agencies, other advocates who are going to get the word out and let homeowners know that Finance, that Finance New Orleans has money to help them pay their utility bills, not just renters, but also homeowners.
I saw that even yesterday in your meeting, because I looked at it online, even though I wasn't able to attend, that you are going, you assigned Katie, I believe, with the task of contacting the various agencies that you just described and letting them know.
I think, I think Jarvis is going to do it, but I'm not sure. That's a Damon, that's a Damon decision. I didn't assign anybody because I think David, I think David is going to decide who's going to do it, but yeah, yeah.
Detail overview and I'm very impressed with Jarvis and, and his, his.
But I don't, but we don't get to pick that. We don't get to decide who does what.
I think it's wonderful that he's done that kind of job to, to capture all the information that he's been provided with. But if those operating agencies would then let the homeowners know that they can take advantage of our program, that would be great. Not only our program, but your program also, right? Is that, is it modeled after the one that you have?
Our program is powered down. So the city has a program, the United Way have, has a program. And we think the state, we know the state is also going to have a homeownership program coming soon. So yes, they're.
The mayor put out one, April 24th, it's only four days old, from what I'm able to see, that she has a rental assistance as well as a utility that came out four days ago.
So that's different. That's a program for, that's an existing program. And the city is asking developers to help them, not developers, sorry, nonprofits or other program administrators to help so that they can expand their existing rental assistance program. The city has about $26 million that they've had on the streets since February. They estimate they can help about 3,000 families and they are, they're falling, they're falling a little bit behind. And so there's concerns that they're asking for, to help expand their capacity. So they're asking CDCs and to, just to help them get more people in the pipeline and get that program out the door, get that money out the door faster. That's what the city announced last week.
Yes. Well, you're doing a good job. I listened to you on radio about a couple of hours ago and you're promoting a lot of the programs. So I just hope that Jarvis had the same success with our small little $50,000 and that it married itself with the larger scale project that you have.
Yeah. And that's what we think. Yeah, we talked to the staff about doing that and yeah. And they're going to come back to the board next month, the committee next month and let us know how their efforts are going. And we'll be able to make some adjustments once we give that old cow, cow a try again.
That's good. That's good.
Any other questions about the, go ahead, Mr. Brown. Sorry.
I'm saying we had to do something similar to that years ago. We had our program, our bond issues were geared only toward low to moderate income. And we expanded the soft, the prior program of what you call the Soft Second mortgage program to include a larger portion of our populace here in the city of New Orleans. And that's exactly what you're doing. You're expanding it to not only tenants, but also to homeowners and their needs. Thank you.
And the staff has done that. The staff is, that program, they, this was their idea. So we just want to make sure that everybody, people know about it.
Okay.
This was the staff's idea. Yeah. All right. Any other questions about the Community Support Fund? And so quickly, we can move through the Own New Orleans Dashboard because there's not a big change on that. Yeah. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Board Member Morris. I want to make one comment about the Community Support Fund. We didn't, I know we decided to table the reallocation, but we failed to get a decision from the board on how, how you'd like us to handle the clients that are the community that we have in our current pipeline for the Community Support Fund. So right now we have 12 applications for rental assistance, but we, that money is allocated for utility assistance. So in the meantime, we need to give the, those applicants a decision. So the question for the board is, you know, a bigger decision about allocating the funding needs to be made. But for the applicants in the current pipeline, how would you like us to move forward with those? Cause we do, we do need to give them.
And how much money is that?
Uh, so 12 times 500, what is that?
$6,000.
$6,000? Yeah. So $6,000.
And so those folks, and that's the only, that's the only other people who are outstanding.
Kelly can talk about the specifics on the pipeline. So Kelly, chime in here, please.
Thanks, Damon. Yeah, the pending pipeline for applications that we've already taken that are either waiting to be paid or in the intake reviewing to ensure they meet the guidelines. So as of yesterday, we, we will not be taking any applications for rental as we move forward with getting the communication out for the utility that's available. But we did have those items already in intake status or in discussion with us and applications already taken.
And when were those applications taken?
Those applications, we have at least three of them are with, with the landlords for review. So those are applications that probably have come to us within the last two weeks.
So I have concerns about that because this is not a new conversation. We started this conversation in February of this year. And so we had questions about this. And so I'm not sure why we were taking new applications when we had not authorized any change.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dame.
No, go ahead, Kelly. Go ahead.
No, I was, I was going to say. No, I was, I was gonna say a lot of this is, is timing. Some of these applications, and I apologize, I don't have the dates in front of me. Once they go to landlord review, there's at times those landlords hold them two to three weeks before they even get to that information back to us. So a lot of these are timing issues. And then review takes about a week or two to ensure they make guidelines and communications with the applicant. I can go back, if you prefer to look at the exact intake date, or if you wanna provide guidance of a cutoff time. I just feel that it's a small population, and I would like to avoid reputational risk with these borrowers after actually taking an application, having to call them back and deny it.
It appears to me that we have choices. We can either allow the applicants that are already in our pipeline the $6,000 be appropriated from utilities into the rental portion. Or we can refer the clients that we have and let them know that, and I would like to do that, that we presently are not have the funds at this particular time and refer them to the city's homeownership and rental program. If, if, if we can move the. Would, would we have a problem?
I mean, I just wanna be clear that, so then we would have, what would be the total remaining for utilities? If we did that, and, and I will also want assurances, I mean, we're gonna take action around that, limiting this and saying no more rental assistance.
Ms. Morris, and actually, there's less than 12. There's two that were holding from April that we didn't pay at all, because we were waiting for the reallocation. I think there's only a total of seven.
So do we have an exact dollar amount? Because I, I don't want this to continue. I would, I would feel comfortable moving. And again, this is not something that we discussed yesterday either, which could have been helpful, because what we would need is an exact number to approve, to change, because the board authorized this for half and half. So we need an exact number to address that, so that we're saying this is what we're doing and no more.
So for the seven items that were totaled $3,500, and there's $48,725 remaining in utilities, I think we've only paid out 1,275 in utilities since conception of the program.
Okay. So we have an exact, we do have an exact amount of what would be, what would be necessary. And instead of 6,000, it sounds like it's 3,800.
3,500.
3,500.
3,500, thank you. So then, I mean, again, that's the issue before us. The program committee did not discuss this yesterday. So we may, so we don't have a recommendation for the rest of the board on this issue.
Without a recommendation, and, and rather, you know, this program has been going on for 14 months, trying to get out $100,000, and you made that point yesterday. If you look at your, I mean, I looked at your, your Zoom, YouTube, and 14 months is to get out $100,000. That's, so that's, can we, can, would it be allowable to the program committee chairman and vice chairman that if we offer a motion to allow $3,500 to be transferred from utilities into the rental portion? And I'd like to offer that as a motion and hope that I get a second so we can move forward.
I think that makes sense. I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. And Jade, just correct us if we can't, but I think we can. So I'm gonna say all in favor of moving the 3,500 from the rental, from the utilities.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go for it.
Can you hear me? I'm so sorry. Because this, because this particular motion was not placed on your agenda, I think just to err, just to err on the side of caution, I would ask that we amend the agenda to add this as an item, an action item. That, that motion needs to be unanimously supported, and then we can accept Mr. Brown's motion. So we can table his motion for right now. I think just to err on the side of caution, we should formally amend the agenda, because it will be considered an action item.
Got it. And does that mean we, one point of question, I think that makes sense, Jade. I wanted to be clear, do we also have to formally table the resolution that we're not going to be voting on?
Well, you don't, you don't have to really take formal action to table something, but I mean, you can certainly put it on the record, trustee Morris, and I think that that should be sufficient to table it until, you know, until you feel comfortable moving.
So we did that already. Yeah, I feel comfortable, that's fine. So I will make a motion that we amend the agenda to consider Mr. Brown's motion. Is that good enough, Jade?
Yeah. So, yeah, and it just needs to be unanimously supported by the board.
All in favor, it's been properly, well, moved and seconded. All in favor to amend the agenda to include Mr. Brown's motion to move 3,500 from the Utilities Committee to the Residential Fund. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any, I hear no opposition. It is unanimous. The agenda, amending the agenda has been approved.
Thank you.
So now, Mr. Brown, I think you can make, Ms. Morris, you can make the motion. Mr. Brown, you can make the motion to move the funds.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move the funds from.
And look, before you do that, Mr. Brown, I would like to be very clear about what we're doing and why we're doing it. I think I got kind of an overview that we had some applicants, about 12 at first, and then it was broken down to about seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Get these people paid.
So from which? Commissioner, Commissioner, this is what my understanding is, and I would probably need to be corrected by the staff. It's my understanding is that there were five, 12 applicants in our pipeline that were seeking rental assistance at $500 each. There was a recalculation by Katie, one of the staff persons, who reflected that there were not 12, but only seven, because the other five must have been referred to some other operating entity, could be the city. So seven times five is $3,500, and that would clear up all of the rental assistance, the backlog that we have. And it would also allow us to have just about 65, 60, no, about 45% of the money that we have originally allocated, $45,000, that would be used for utility assistance, and also to try to encourage individuals to take advantage of our green mortgage program once it's converted. That's my understanding. I might be wrong.
So, so what, how much? How much money would be left in the fund that is being taken from?
About 45, 46,000. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, a program that had only $100,000 14 months ago. And remember, I tried to get some of that money referred to homeless shelters. But that's, that's how long it's been out there, 14, I mean, 14, 14 months.
Right, I understand. Thank you for clearing that up. I just wanted to be very clear about what we were moving and what we were doing before we did it. Thanks.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to you, Mr. Brown, for your motion.
Okay, I believe I've given, to repeat, my motion is to move resources from, and our Community Development Fund, from utilities to rental assistance to provide for seven applicants who are in our pipeline. And that will clear our pipeline of all applicants, and we'll be taking no more applications under the rental assistance program.
Second. Second.
As the motion's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved.
All right, so then, now that, so we've dealt with that, and so, and again, the program committee is going to hear in the next month from staff their efforts to let people who are working with homeowners know about the utility program and, and other renters. There could be renters who are interested in it as well. But we wanna make sure that they're targeting homeowners, in particular, people who can take advantage of the green mortgage program. And we'll spend the next few meetings, I imagine, hearing how that's going and seeing how that's moving, so that we can get some of these, these funds on the street to help these homeowners. As I was saying earlier, the next thing we had to talk about was the Own New Orleans program. There has been minimal activity this month, in March of 2021, so no big changes. And then the Sustainable Developer Pipeline, an overview, if we can move to the, to the dashboard for, so everybody can see that, and so, keep going. One, okay, so keep going, one more. Because this is one of the big things that we wanted to talk about yesterday and make sure the board understood. This is the, the pipeline report for, for the, the large development programs that we've been doing, the pilots and things like that. As you guys can see, the dashboard has still not been updated to include the revisions. The staff assure us that they will have made those changes by the June meeting, so we can review those. So this is still the same format that we saw previously, but we're still waiting to hear, see those final changes made. So again, so board members can understand, you know, the pipeline in a way that we felt needed to be a little, a little more clear. While there's some good data here, there's some things that's missing. And so we'll be seeing the next iteration of this at the next board meeting, the next program committee meeting and next board meeting. But I did wanna make sure that no one thought that, no one thought that their comments on this dashboard had, had been ignored. It's just that the staff have not had a chance to implement the changes to the, to the dashboard. So that is where we are with that process, and there's no big updates on. Well, there are some updates. There are 14 active, 14 pending applications. And so they're, they're in a different status. Five are full application status or in, 14 are in underwriting, five are in pre-application status. And again, it's, it's gonna be incredibly important that this dashboard be up to date so that we know what's coming, you know, when board meetings are coming and what's gonna be coming before us. The program committee is gonna be spending a lot of time, you know, talking, listening, hearing about these deals, and then bringing them to the full board. But we wanna make sure that people know what's coming and see the impact that Finance New Orleans is going to be having over next year. And then finally, the green mortgage program, staff is still working to finalize the rollout. We hope that, again, they're gonna start, they can start fishing with the utility funding and start lining up some people who would, who would be able to take advantage of the green mortgage product. And that, Mr. Chairman, is the end of the programs committee report, unless there are any other questions.
Several, committee chairman. Relative to the dashboard, I think it's, and it's still under construction. And it's, it has not been updated, as you said. There's several items that I'd like to have considered. We are not, we are recipients of the $5,000 on the pilot program, and, and as that program is further developed under construction, we are due additional resources that come to the authority. And this is from the financial, finance committee chairman is not here. So I'd like to see, under construction, as one of your topics that's to be added, the percentage of construction, if we could get that, the percentage of construction that's completed, that's number one.
I thought we added that, I think, but yeah.
Oh, you have construction, but I said.
I thought that was something that was raised before, but I think, again, that's when, we've gotta, we're gonna have to see the next iteration, because this hasn't changed at all. So we need to see the next iteration to make sure that we haven't missed anything, but yeah.
Thank you, one. Number two, the LLC, or the name of that LLC, number two.
The owner, yeah.
And, and, and I called it minority participation, but diversity of the project, the 35% that the city has allocated. If we could, we could see that that percentage, since we're, we're gonna be the agency. Once we approve this today, I'm so excited about what's gonna come up later on. We're gonna be responsible for the monitoring of these projects. So if, if the diversity is expressed there, and the 35%, that could be a column. And you quite adequately have covered the 10%, 20%, 30% of median income. I think those are important columns. But if those three could, could be considered, I'd appreciate it as additions to the dashboard.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think, I know we talked about the, we wanted to break down of the affordable units. We wanted to break down by tenure and type, and, and making sure that you're clear about what's rental, what's new, what's homeownership, so we have an understanding of what's being produced and, and the income levels. What does it mean? What kind of affordability is being provided for those affordable units? Where, for example, for the age, for the first item, 90% of them are affordable. To what level is, is what you're talking about? And I know we talked about timeline, when construction is going to start, so we can have a date so that we can know what they're hitting. And I think one thing that has to be happened is we make, we need to make sure that that date is fixed as a, like, there's a projected timeline start, but that, that's not changed without the board being made aware of it being changed. Things happen, delays happen, that's totally clear. But we, we wanna make sure that these projects are being kept on track.
Yeah.
And.
Might be delayed. If you hurt schedule, you might say something, and something else happens.
Yeah, which happens, which just happens, but they don't, we shouldn't change the date without the board understanding that the date is being changed, that if you push back, it could be moved forward. That's always a good surprise.
Yeah.
So any other questions about the program committee report? And so on the programs committee, we heard yesterday about the Resilient New Orleans Financing Plan. And so staff is going to present on that, and so that the board can take up the next resolution around the finance plan, that, the financing plan that Finance New Orleans is, is going to be working on moving forward. So I'm, I guess, if Chair Chase is okay, I can turn it over to the staff for their presentation?
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'm so sorry. One other thing, because we're only talking about affordability, and I saw in the program report, the items that are, the pilot programs that are under consideration, and I only wanted you to note one of them, and that's in the district that I represent to some degree, in District B. And that's the Coliseum Project. The Coliseum Project has 103 units that are going to be developed, but only 5% of them, and I understand, these are, this is payment in lieu of taxes that would be going to other places, and only 5% is going to affordable housing, as opposed to the ones that we've already approved, like Peasley, 100%. The McDonald 30, number 19, it's got about 60% affordable housing. So I just wanted that, since it's under review right now, to be conscious of the fact that that is only, less than 5% of those units are affordable units. And I'd want the committee to pay.
The staff are gonna, yeah, the staff are gonna have to explain that one to us. My guess would be, is that it's not in the mandatory area, and so that this is voluntary. And so that, that, the benchmarks are different for mandatory voluntary, but that is definitely something that we need to make sure that as the staff, when the staff brings it to us, because we will be the ones approving this. And, yeah, and so we, that, we need to make sure that.
Affordable units could be increased, I think would be a great thing.
Yeah, we gotta maximize it.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, one, Boris, I could add something here. We've been meeting with the city to discuss the inclusion Arizona policy. So to remind the board. to discuss the inclusionary zoning policy, so to remind the board, the CEA, that we had approved with the City of New Orleans last year, uh, in that CEA, it outlined inclusionary zoning requirements and it also outlined affordability or affordable housing requirements. So essentially, our pilot program, uh, supports two ends of the spectrum. At one end of the spectrum are the types of projects that Mr. Brown just mentioned, deals that are a hundred percent affordable. So there's a pilot formula for those types of deals. And then at the oppo- opposite end of the spectrum are those deals that, that fall under the voluntary inclusionary zoning. And their affordability requirement is five percent per the city. So those are guidelines that were established by the city in their inclusionary zoning policy. Um, and per our CEA, we're following that policy and designing a pilot program around, uh, those policy strategies. So you're gonna see projects that are on both ends of that spectrum, and sometimes you're gonna see projects that are in, that are in the middle. Uh, and, and council can, you know, comment on the, uh, you know, the ongoing documentation of these projects and the upfront agreements that are put in place to make sure that we are following the city's policies and that we're not providing public benefit to, to developers that aren't giving back the affordability benefit and other benefits that we're looking for. Um, but that's just something for the board to be aware of, that we're dealing with a wide spectrum of project types. And it's going to depend on where they are in the city and who's developing those projects.
Yeah, Mr. Burns, and looking at it, I, I, I thank you for the explanation, but I wouldn't want you, how important this is, to go before the city council, which is after you go through your resilient group, the next step is the city council. And this is the kind of question that the city council will ask you, why is such a small amount of affordable houses being used? And we're using the payment in lieu of taxes as a part of that. So that's a very good explanation, I just didn't see it anywhere in the document.
I understand, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think it might be helpful, that, that might be another amendment to the, to the thesis, that we clarify which program they're utilizing. And that would help. Clear that up, just say, okay, there's a, there's a, that still doesn't mean that we're gonna approve it or even that, that the staff is reviewing it now. This may not make it all the way through, uh, but it might, what might work very well do so, but that we understand that the, we know what the program is, which program they're applying for. And what the requirements are for that.
Yeah, that's understandable, but we can add that to the, uh, the pipeline update.
And that will help with community too, because we could, we'll get to the place where we, we'll know them and expect that, but that would also just make sure that I won't, for the sake of transparency, when community sees our reports, they'll go, oh, okay, this is, well, this is different from this, that's why, it's a different program, that's why there are differences inside of it. The affordability requirements, things like that. All right, well, I mean, any other questions are on the dashboard? So we can make sure we're, I think everybody's really eager to see that next month, so that's, that's gonna be a big topic of discussion next month, clearly. Uh, so this, Mr. Chair, if, um, with your permission, I will turn things over to staff so they can get to their presentation.
Yes, let's.
All right.
Presentation.
Thank you very much, give us one second, I'm gonna transfer it over to my colleague Jarvin.
Good afternoon, board members, can y'all hear me?
You're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, Nas, I need you to stop sharing your screen, okay, there we go. I'm about to share my screen. So first off, I want to thank you all for, uh, taking the opportunity to meet with me over the course of the last few weeks as we have prepared ourselves to roll out these, uh, these two, uh, resolutions before the board for approval and support. Um, I'm gonna give an all encompassing presentation that'll cover both the strategic plan as well as the Resilient New Orleans Financing Plan. Um, in the hopes that, once we get done, we'll take up both resolutions separately, if that's okay with everybody? So, let me get started here. So, a lot of this work had previously been done, um, as a lot of us newest staff members have come on, but I do want to give a special shout out to, uh, to the team prior to my, to my entering and as well as Damon under his leadership, and then Mashika Baptiste, who really led heavily on the, uh, Resilient New Orleans Financing portion, once she came on board, with the help of Derek and Elizabeth as well. Um, so what I do is I go through this presentation, it, it kind of follows a pretty smooth track, it starts with some historical overview, and then it rolls into some of the details of both programs. Uh, I will offer you all the opportunity, if you have a question or a comment comes up, please feel free to chime in and let me know what's going on, okay? So, we'll start with the history of Finance New Orleans and the background and community investments. So, as board members, each of you know that Finance New Orleans is a quasi-governmental agency that was created by the New Orleans City Council in nineteen seventy-eight with the goal of increasing affordable housing and economic opportunity for the residents, and you are, are the seven member board of trustees that govern, govern the organization. All right, so, key accomplishments for twenty twenty that we'd like to point out for the board as well as the public. So in December of twenty nineteen, the organization, through Damon's leadership and in, uh, consultation and with support from the city of New Orleans, um, competed for and won two key grants, one from the C forty, uh, one from C forty cities and the other from Mississippi River Town, Rivers and Towns Initiative. Um, those grants helped fund a lot of the key work that we're gonna be presenting before you today. Um, in April of twenty twenty, we know that COVID had, had already been running pretty rampant at that point, so we created, or the, the agency created the Community Support Fund for COVID Relief. Then in May of twenty twenty, the agency entered into a pivotal, um, CEA between Finance New Orleans, Louisiana Housing Corporation and the City of New Orleans. Uh, from that CEA, we rolled into September of twenty twenty where the agency, um, secured its first sustainable developer pro- pilot transactions. And then in September of twenty twenty, we made the shift towards becoming one of the first, uh, nineteen green banks in the country by joining American Green Bank Consortium. All right, so now we'll start talking about our vision for Resilient New Orleans in. All right, so, so, so our new vision statement.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, at some point, if he's getting ready to go into the vision, I would like to make a comment relative to the milestones, if I might.
Yes, please do.
What's critical, what I consider to be critical, in May of two thousand twenty, a tremendous agreement was made, and I compliment the staff and the finance authority of New Orleans to put in together this partnership. Under affordable housing, that partnership provides the structure for the future development of affordable housing for a long time to come, and I hope it's maintained. You have the Finance Authority of New Orleans, an agency that's been around for years and years trying to move forward with affordable housing. And you have a critical element, as far as I'm concerned, relative to affordable housing in the state of Louisiana, in particular, the city of New Orleans. The capital outlay budget is where most of the resources for affordable housing are gotten, that's where our mortgage revenue bonds come from. allocations, at one point in time, there were four agencies within the state of Louisiana. There was the Finance Authority of New Orleans, the Baton Rouge Authority, the Jefferson Parish Authority, the Lafayette Parish Authority. But we had no relationship with the agency that gets most of the money, and somebody has been, had, had the vision to include the LHFA. The LHFA, at one time, received one half of the two hundred million dollars that's allocated for the state of Louisiana. That's a tremendous amount, we would have to go up there and ask them, or ask, uh, uh, for our allocations to do a thirty million dollar bond issue for the city of New Orleans. But somehow you put together, you brought together a partnership that I think is, that, that needs to, that should not ever be overlooked. The relationship between Fano, the LPFA, and the CEA on a long-term basis, and that's where we're going to be able to make the one billion dollars that you need to finance some of the projects that you have here. So I just didn't want us to go over that, I just wanted to add that, just as, uh, a historical, uh, event of something that we've been trying to get as a milestone for years and years, and now it's happening. That's all in my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Brown, any other comments or questions at this point? So, um, I just like to point out, I understand that you all had a board retreat towards the end of last year where a lot of these ideas came from. So a lot of this information will sound very familiar because it was generated by you all as our organizational leaders. Um, so if any of it sounds familiar, you want to chime in and say, hey, that was my idea, feel free to do that. All right, so the new vision statement is to create a resilient New Orleans with an opportunity for all. All right, the new mission statement for the organization is to improve the quality of life in the city of New Orleans by investing in affordable housing, economic development, and climate resilience projects that produce quality jobs and wealth for our residents. So, the core values of the organization, dedication to the community, strong ethics and integrity, collaboration, equity, professional and efficient service. So as we shift over now to talk about our ten-year strategic plan, um, this is the, the set of ideas and principles that have guided us over the course of the next ten years, uh, from the year twenty twenty-one, starting this year, hopefully with y'all's passes and endorsement, through the year twenty thirty, right? So for us, this includes using climate resilience to physically transform the city of New Orleans, creating economic opportunities, uh, building public wealth for our community reinvestment, and growing as an agile, innovative organization. So, the core programs, uh, as it relates to us as an entity are sustainable housing, green buildings, and green infrastructure. So, the new green finance business model is designed to increase, increase resiliency and opportunity. So if you notice, I'll just kind of go through this pyramid structure for each one of you all, and if you have questions as we go through, um, please feel free to chime in. So, we have the general fund which we operate from, and from that, we intend to fund three buckets, uh, the three, the three, uh, main bucket for our project development. That's our single-family home development, that's our multi-family home developments, and then increasing investments in green buildings and green infrastructure. At each level, there is a series of capital providers that are needed in order to, to help sustain needs. But from each of those programs, if we start on the left-hand side of your screen at the single-family, uh, home production, we've got our green mortgages program and pre-development loans. Once you get over into multi-family, we've got, uh, our tax exemptions or our pilots. And then once you go over to the right-hand side of your screen with the green builds and infrastructure, we've got green infrastructure homes and renewable energy loans, right? And at the bottom of all of these, uh, our key components are tax investors, muni bond investors, and impact investors. All right, are there, uh, any, uh, any questions thus far? So, uh, from each of these buckets and each of these, uh, five program outlets that we have, we have some community outcomes which continue to be for us, green job creation, affordable housing creation, stormwater mitigation, reduction in CO2 emissions across the city, and the, uh, deployment of green technology across the city. So for us as an organization, um, we, we, we hear, we have heard, uh, interview, talked to Damon personally, or you heard him speak. He talks about this one billion dollar, uh, this one billion dollar investment, right, this investment in our city that, over the course of the next ten years, one small seed investment can lead to one billion dollars of overall investment. That includes equity and program-related investments, that includes green and environmental impact bonds and commercial lending to create this impact across the city. All right, so from there, we'll start to transition into the Resilient New Orleans Finance Plan, which is one of those key components that we talk about as we talk about these buckets of money that, that we tend to, uh, infuse with capital so that we can create that billion dollars impact. So, what is the Resilient New Orleans Finance Plan? In the beginning of the presentation, I pointed out that, uh, Finance New Orleans was able to see, receive those two grants, one from C forty and the other from Mississippi Rivers and Towns Initiative. And essentially, what this is, the, uh, the grant was able to continue the work started in twenty fifteen by the Resilient New Orleans Strategy. Finance New Orleans can be, can be with several public agencies to develop a finance framework for green infrastructure projects. Um, I want to stop right here just to make a point, I know when I spoke to, uh, Board Member Brown previously, he had asked me specifically about the agency partners here, and I know there have been a couple of other questions about, um, our ability to push forward such a financing framework and who helped us to, to derive this. So, I'll go through, uh, the list of members of our working group right quick, just to give that for the board's identification. I wanted to. Okay, um, so, um, from the city of New Orleans specifically, the Office of Resilience and Sustainability, the Office of Utilities, the Office of Community Development, and the Office of Housing Policy, where all our partners there. Um, the New Orleans Redevelopment Authority, the New Orleans Business Alliance Sewage and Water Board, the Housing Authority of New Orleans, the Grid in New Orleans Foundation, the Louis Armstrong International Airport, the RTA, Orleans Parish School Boards, the Downtown Development District, and then finally, us Finance New Orleans.
Wow, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, as an overview of the Resilient New Orleans Finance Plan, we've kind of got three buckets that we, we've kind of catching things in, uh, to kind of lay out what this looks like, right, we've got the project framework, we've got the financing policy, and then we've got the Resilient New Orleans Finance Working Group, which is the group of individuals that I just laid out to you all. All right, so, we kind of oper- we're, we're operating in this continuum of work that needs to be done, um, in order to actually put this plan into action, right? So first and foremost, there's research and development, right, any projects, anything that's gonna come from this financing plan has to be rooted in research and understanding of what it takes, because this plan is just, is a framework, right? We've got the pipeline development, then next we've got community and stakeholder engagement, project implementation, framework and impact evaluation, and that's followed by reporting and transparency, which would include our board here at Finance New Orleans, our partners' boards, the city council, and any other agencies or entities who will be considered our stakeholders in this process to help us in funding, in, in funding this plan. All right, so for us, there's a question? Uh, for us, we've got a, a couple of key target outcomes that we, that I previously mentioned from our earlier slide. We've got the, uh, affordable and sustainable housing production, we've got green job creation, stormwater mitigation, community awareness and action, green technology deployment, and a reduction of CO2 emissions. Um, so green tech, right, is one of those things we hear a lot about. Uh, for us, we wanted to point out what some of those green tech advancements look like and what that tech deployment looks like. So, we've got the energy efficient retrofitting, right, um, I know Chair Morris, when I worked at the Grid New Orleans Fair Housing Action Center, would talk about, uh, light-type, watertight, and airtight, those are the type of retrofits that would help a lot of our, a lot of our citizens in the bulk of the constituency, uh, save money on their energy bills. We've got hurricane-resistant roofing, we've got electric vehicles, which would also include charging posts for electric vehicles around the city through a deployment program in a partnership with the city of New Orleans. We've got permeable pavement, which helps us to continue to move that rainwater off the streets, so it doesn't sit still and cause additional flooding. And then we've got the production and storage of solar energy through the installation of solar panels. Um, and then we have rain barrels to catch rainwater as well as gardens. So, our roadmap for twenty twenty-one and what this looks like going forward. So, the first step on this roadmap at this point for us is presenting this plan and supporting resolutions to you, our board. Um, in hopes of going to your support on, on the resolution and endorsing us to actually go out and, and, and do additional labor. In hopes of going to your support on, on the resolution and endorsing us to actually go out and, and, and do additional labor work to help bring this plan to fruition with our partners. Those, those members of the resilient New Orleans Working Group will also have a resolution going before. Them as a, as a group in their particular agencies for support and sign off from their agency heads. Then in June, July-ish, we intend to go before the New Orleans City Council. To get them to also endorse it because they're a key partner in this for us, as, as, as well as the mayor's offices, Linda Hurst staff. And then we're gonna start with our first monthly meeting as a resilient New Orleans Working Group. To look at all these strategies that have been compiled in this report and then figure out what's the best ways of going about deployment. From our, our individual agencies, but also with our partner agencies. And then in quarter three. In quarter three, it's our intent to, to go out and issue our first report and update to not only our boards, but also to the New Orleans City Council. Alright, and that's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions or would anyone like me to revisit any slides?
I do have a few comments to add to what Jarvis has stated. Thank you Jarvis for the presentation. And, you know, mainly this is the culmination of work. That's been going on for quite some time that started before my tenure at Finance New Orleans and. You know, a lot of board members have been around when this work started. Which I really, I, I want to say really started after Katrina, because at that point, the agency started looking for. New ways to deliver. It was forced to, to remap the agency's trajectory. It was forced to rethink. You know, how services were delivered, and a lot of you lived through that story. So, you know, this is the beginning. This is a new beginning for us. Many agencies have agreed with the strategies and the approaches, and that's all outlined in that resilient New Orleans Finance Strategy. And I want to say that this board, I want to commend this board, you haven't approved the resolution yet. But I would like to say that this board is taking a huge step in terms, in terms of leading the city. Because all of those agencies that Mr. Lewis mentioned, they're using your template. To create the resolution for their individual agencies. So the expectation or the conversation with the rest of the local agencies around the city. About what's the best, what was the best way to accomplish getting everybody on the same page. To, you know, agree to what needed to be done. You know, we, we talked about having, you know, one large agreement that everybody signed on to, or C E A among all the agencies with the mayor signing off. But ultimately, we landed on every agency is individually responsible for getting their approvals and being a part of that working group. So everybody's waiting on Finance New Orleans to take that first step. So today would be their first step, and it's the first thing we're going to do, wants us to prove is go to those other agencies. Show them the template so that they can use in their own agencies, and we're probably going to have to visit some board meetings just to do some explaining. But that's what we expect to be doing for the rest of the year. So I just wanted to bring to light that this is a much larger plan, it's bigger than Finance New Orleans. But Finance New Orleans through this board is taking a big step in leadership and creating a new path for New Orleans. So we're excited about it and, you know, we hope that. You see the long-term growth of this, you see the, the potential of this plan. And you continue to provide support to the staff in order for us to deliver on. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm just, I'm just excited, man. I'm excited about this, this project. I'm excited about this plan. And just a point of personal privilege. Since I'm the oldest member on the board, I, I want to tell you how much I have appreciated. The opportunity of working with. Lawyers, Smith. Advocates of housing, Morris. Businessmen, lawyers like Hunter. You know, and, 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 and Wade, and I go way back over 20 years. So it's been a pleasure for me to come back on this board to see this event. I consider this one of the most important meetings in those 20 years that I've ever attended. Because it outlines a future. And the future participation from the Finance Authority of New Orleans with other operating agencies. To complete. And move forward with providing affordable housing and providing for our mission. That we all took an oath to on joining this board. And I compliment each one of your board members, I compliment each one of your staff people. As one of your senior members.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And I couldn't say it better, but, but I also do want to compliment you. Cause the institutional knowledge that you bring to the table. With all the valid questions and concerns, making sure we're staying focused and not missing anything. Is always needed and always truly appreciated. So thank you, Damon. Thank you and your staff. You set the vision. We're gonna keep it moving, and this is that first step to continuing along that path. So thank you all.
You're welcome.
Is, do we pull up the resolution? Has everybody? I'm trying to pull it up on my phone now.
Yeah, Najah is currently showing the resolution to you all.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Najah. Thank you, board members, for your time.
Most welcome. The first resolution before you is for the resilient New Orleans Finance.
So we reviewed this yesterday in Program Committee as well as hearing the presentation, and so the Program Committee. Did vote to, to bring this forward. There are going to be more opportunities to dig down deeper, this is as staff explained. The big framework, and we're gonna be, we're gonna start building scaffolding to build up on this, you know, other things like timelines and, you know. Some benchmarks and goals and other things like that, but this is the beginning. This is the first step as Commissioner Brown mentioned. And Chair Chase mentioned. So the, the Program Committee approved this yesterday, so I would like to make a motion. That the board approve this resolution. If I could get a second.
May I, may I comment on the resolution before I second it? I hope you, okay, I'm sorry. Under item one, and I've mentioned this to Ms. Russell, under item four. Six. Where the Board of Trustees or the company, the board, decides to authorize Damon Burns. With the, if this is implemented. I believe we're gonna lose some of our staff. Because we are one of 19 green banks that's approved for the United States of America. If this works, and I know it will. We're gonna lose some of those people. So I was suggesting, and I've suggested that to the attorney, that we place there. Because it's a forty year old activity, and many of us as board members will not be here. That after we have Damon Burns, we put all his. Or her. Board approved successor. Not that there's any indication of, of the talent that we have now. But for, and it could be as a contingency, if Damon gets, if, if something happens. And I think it's something happen positive is gonna be that we might lose it. As this, as this moves forward. I'm suggesting that that be added. And. On the very last. Page, it says resolve further that the company's staff is hereby authorized and directed to prepare any documents, and we want him to prepare those documents. Agreements. And take appropriate actions as may be necessary to execute this plan. And I'm suggesting with board approval. With board approval on agreements and not a binding instrument. To bind the board. But I'd like to second that motion if, if you take those, those comments under consideration as an amendment to your motion. Committee Chairman Morris.
Yeah, no, let me, let me make a revise my motion if that's okay. I'd like to revise my motion that we adopt this resolution, adopt resolution. Let me get to the number. Resolution number dash pro twenty one oh two. That we adopted with trustee Brown's suggestions to amend the language as it relates to authorizing the CEO. So that it ensures that if the CEO, that, that if Damon is no longer the CEO, that his successor, his successor. Be duly authorized to, to continue this plan and that the final line. Allow for, implement the plan with board approval.
Second.
Unless, okay.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Here none, motion carries, it's approved.
Were you like, great? Resolution authorizing the 10 year strategic plan.
I, I couldn't hear you, Nash.
I'm sorry. The motion before you, the resolution before you now on the screen is a. Authorize the 10 year strategic plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
I have the same comments about that resolution, those inclusions, that's if, if, for consideration for the board.
It is. I, I see that. And, and if you scroll down to the last, I guess the last word, is that the same as well?
Yes.
So I, I have one question. I thought we were going to, oh yeah, because we did the both together. That's right. Never mind. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay. I move for approval of the resolution with those. Additional items.
Second.
Okay, resolution. Is this the E X C twenty one zero zero three? Has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none, the resolution is approved. And I know we jumped to that resolution, Damon. Did you have a report if you want to go back to that report or was this it?
And I'm sorry, I do see. An item missing from the menu, from the agenda, the finance report. We were unable to have a finance committee meeting. But Mr. Badger did prepare a financial report for the board this month. So if the board is interested in hearing a formal presentation, you do, you did receive a copy of his presentation via email. But if you want to hear the direct information on finance, then we can report out now, and I do have a brief presentation. For the board once Mr. Badger finishes, if that's your pleasure.
And we'd have to amend the agenda, right? Oh, with that something that could fall under your presentation, Damon.
The only question, the only suggestion I have, Damon, on that is that the financials have not been presented. Through the Finance and Investments Committee, being to get, didn't have a meeting. Consider that as well.
Yeah, Jay, it would be helpful if Jay chimed in here to help us out with procedure.
Yeah, are, are we, are we, yeah, eh, eh, explain to me, Damon, what action you're asking the board to, to take?
Well, we didn't have our Finance and Investments Committee meeting, and normally Mr. Badger presents a report at that meeting, and then often, of course, always presents it at the board level. So we did not, we omitted to include it on the agenda. So Board Member Morris asked, number one, do we need to add the Finance Committee or Financial Report to the agenda? Or can it be taken under the Executive Management Report? And then Nash is saying, go ahead, Jay, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, you know, it, it depends on what, eh, eh, if we're asking the board to take action on it, right? So if, if Byron is just making a presentation, there's no need to amend the agenda. But if we're asking that Byron's presentation or, or report somehow be accepted. Or adopted by the, the, the board, then we would need to formally amend the agenda. And we would also, of course, have to accept public comment if we are adding an action item. My recommendation here would just be that you.
You cut out for a moment, Jay. Did you, did you say you received the report? Jay, you still there? I heard it say received report, but I want us to make sure that was the, the actual recommendation.
Yes.
Can you guys hear me? I, I was, I was suggesting that you allow him to make, to present whatever verbal report he is offering. Without the need for the board to formally accept it or adopt it. You can certainly take that action at a subsequent meeting if you want to formally approve something. But I would just, you know, consider allowing him to just provide a verbal update on the financials under Damon's. Under Damon's reporting, it would, so that would prevent you guys from going through the, the motions, but. That would just be my recommendation.
That sounds good.
I did have one more, yeah, and I do have one more question. I don't seem that we're, I don't have the document. It's in the, it's in the finance meeting. Email, is that where it is? The paper copy of, or the, the electronic copy. I just want to make sure I have it, so I can follow along.
No, ma'am, we have not submitted, because we did not have a meeting.
Got it. So, so yeah, so that's fine. So Byron's just gonna do it live, and then we'll get it later.
Yeah, we can send it, we can send it later.
Okay.
Correct. So I think Byron, you're, you're gonna go right before Damon's report, so you can. Give us the information, and Damon, you'll follow up with your brief presentation.
Alright. Well, I'll, good afternoon again. So just to cover the, the financial status report, this will be as of March. So year to date, our revenues, our actual revenues are forty nine thousand. Our budget year to date is a hundred thousand, so we're short by fifty one thousand. That's primarily driven by our, our multi-family program income line. We did not have any, you know, we're projecting pilot revenue there. We didn't have any closings in the month of March. As mentioned earlier, we do have some in the pipeline right now, so depending on the status of those, we'll see. If they get approved and followed through, that'll be some, some upcoming revenue in the next couple of months. On the expense side, year to date, our actual expenses were four hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars to a budget of five hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. So that is favorable by ninety eight thousand dollars. Primarily driven, or favorable in most lines, we do have a slight upward variance in the consultant and professional services line. It's five thousand dollars over budget.
Excuse me, Byron?
Yes.
Sorry, the number is getting a little blurry. Could you maybe share your screen and we could follow along?
Uh, I'm actually looking at a printout, but let's see, I can maybe pull up, see if I can pull up. Uh, I, I'm actually looking at a printout, but let's see, I can maybe pull up, see if I can pull up. There, wasn't here. All right, can you see my screen now?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so here's a kinda comprehensive look of what I was just going over. Uh, you can see the top portion, of course, is the revenues that I just mentioned. And then I was talking to the expenses, uh, which I mentioned were five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five, uh, four, I'm sorry, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand of actual year-to-date expenses to a budget of five hundred and fifty-five thousand, which is short of budget by ninety-eight thousand. And I was saying that most of the expense lines were favorable with the exception of maybe three lines, the consultant, professional services, the software and subscription line, and the taxes and insurance line, but overall favorable. And then I note that there, uh, the community support, uh, the amount that was awarded, uh, in the month of March was seven thousand, that is not included uh, in here, that this actually, uh, included in another, uh, segment of the fund, but I wanted to actually note, um, that seven thousand was awarded in the month of March, and year-to-date, we were awarded nine thousand and seventy-five total in a community support fund. Uh, moving on, this next page, it shows a, uh, thirteen-month trending of our revenues and expenses. Um, we are trending within our averages in general, uh, on a revenue and expense side, we had a little, uh, last month, well, in February, there was a jump in the expenses. Uh, but you'll see, uh, for the month of March, we're kinda back in line with our, our, our averages. But that lift in February was the result of mainly some consultant and professional services fees. Next page, this is our balance sheet, uh, not much movement here, so the composition remains the same, remains stable. This is a comparison year-over-year. Uh, this is our pathways for home ownership report, which shows our revenues and expenses year-to-date. Um, not much activity here on the revenue side, there's six hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is, which is interest on, um, our, uh, checking accounts. And then on the expense side, it's fifteen thousand year-to-date. And then finally, we have our cash and cash equivalents. And as of March, we're at ten point five. Uh, that's slightly lower than the previous month, which is ten point six, and I think the difference, uh, was roughly ninety thousand dollars, um, change month over month. And that concludes my report. Any questions or comments? All right. If none, thank you.
Thank you, Byron, I'll jump in here, please unshare your screen so I can share mine.
Sure.
See. Can everyone see my screen now?
Yes.
All right, so I'll walk through a few more highlights, uh, Byron covered our financial aspect, I'll touch a little bit on it. Um, but mainly, I wanted to just update the board on where we are, organization, with some of the things that staff has been working on and, and keeping a close eye on. Um, so some news and highlights, uh, for this month. Some of these are carryovers from last month, but I just wanted to reiterate their importance. Uh, President Job, President, President Biden's American House Plan, released at the end of March, calls for a national green bank investment, or Clean Energy Accelerator, uh, and the, uh, Coalition for Green Capital, the American Green Bank Consortium, which we're now a part of, they're leading that effort. And in short, what will happen there, uh, is there will be a hundred, if it goes through as planned, there'll be a hundred billion-dollar investment, a one-time investment in a national green bank, which would be an independent, uh, organization from the federal government, uh, but wo- would receive some seed funding, that national green bank would in turn provide funding to green banks like Finance New Orleans. Because Mr. Brown, yeah, as Mr. Brown mentioned, there are only a handful of green banks in the country right now, nineteen, and there was a report, uh, that went out last week, uh, on the overall green banking industry. And we expect the number of green banks to pick up to about the same number of finance authorities that you see around the country today, which numbers in a couple of hundreds. So this is really the beginning of, of movement, and the, the beginning of, uh, the reinvestment in our country and in our cities.
Yes.
And we're playing a key role in this, so, uh, if things go through as planned for the National Green Bank, Finance New Orleans is in line to receive a substantial investment from that National Green Bank, which will help us to accelerate our goals and gr- and get to that one billion-dollar community investment goal, which by the way, I think is something that we can exceed over time. So it's a, it's a hurdle to get to, but, um, I, I think our sights should be set much larger, actually, you know, over the long timeframe, or long time, long-term horizon, that we need to be focused on the physical transformation of New Orleans. Um, so that National Green Bank investment would aid us quite a bit. Also, you just heard about our strategic plan, the Resilient New Orleans Plan, and some of the programs we're coming out with, like the Green Mortgage Program. Now that you have provided the approval for staff to move forward, we're gonna start making our announcements, working with the city, uh, letting the community know about the new programs we have coming out and the intentions we have, uh, for our Resilient New Orleans strategy. Um, and then again, we, we estimate our capital needs, our internal capital needs, to be, um, over the one hundred million dollar mark in order for us to get to that one billion dollar goal. So that one hundred million dollars of capital is gonna come from a variety of places, uh, preferably the National Green Bank, we've been talking to community banks about making a substantial investment in Finance New Orleans, we've been pitching foundations as well, and then we've also been working with the city of New Orleans, the mayor's office and the city council to receive, uh, a large investment from the city, we've been working on that for some time, as y'all know. Um, but we do think the timing is right, the mayor has provided support for this initiative, the mayor has included us in many of her speeches, uh, when she goes out and talks about resilience in New Orleans, uh, she often mentioned fi- mentions Finance New Orleans as the green banking entity that's going to carry out the investment of making New Orleans sustainable, of deploying green technology, et cetera. Um, so we are working with the, with City Hall to help us round out our capital needs, but that's something Mr. Badger and the rest of the team is also working on, so we don't have the official number yet, but it is a work in progress, and it's something we're gonna come back to you on, as we always do an update on the oper- on our operating budget, the capital budget, uh, will be just as important over the next ten to forty years. And the next slide is a strategic plan status update. Uh, you'll, you know, we, we started talking about some of these items last month, and I added some new elements to this presentation, but as you can see for the month of May, um, we have a total of forty strategic plan items. And this is a two-year strategic plan, uh, since we're going on over a much longer timeframe of ten years. It's gonna take about two years to turn around a cycle of work. So in the next two years, we have forty tasks or action items outlined. Six are in progress, three have already been completed, and thirty-one, uh, haven't been started. And you can see below, uh, we have listed out some of the key action, uh, key action items for the first and second quarters of this year. A lot of these are underway and close to being completed. So this will be an ongoing rolling process where we continuously update you on the work that the staff is focused on from a day-to-day perspective. And then also, you'll be able to see how we're tracking as it relates to completing these items. And then that, that first column, as you see total tasks, where you see total tasks, uh, that should remain static, but it could change over time too, as new information is uncovered, as we do more research, as more partnerships are developed, new ideas, new ideas just come about. So there may, there may be some adding and subtracting to this chart, but for the most part, we expect those forty action items to remain consistent, and that's where our focus will be over the next two years. And then lastly, I wanted to provide, um, a historic perspective of our strategic plan scorecard. I outlined some metrics that we would go over, I talked about those in our last meeting. Um, and this is not the official scorecard that we'll move forward with in the, uh, as, as we get more results, but I wanted to take a moment before we got started with keeping track of our strategic plan goals, to look at where we, where we started five years ago, um, and this, and that began with my tenure at Finance New Orleans to where we are today in twenty-twenty-one. Um, so our staff count started out at four, when I arrived in twenty-sixteen, and now we're up to thirteen. Our cash was at nine point three million, today we are at ten point five million. Um, so the increase there is mainly attributable to, uh, us moving around some assets, we liquidated some real estate, we also liquidated some mortgage-backed securities, uh, that were in the money, so to speak, we did that a few years ago. Um, and that helped to, to bolster our cash position, especially in light of us, um, spending cash in order to get back into a, uh, a profitable and sustainable position. The bonds outstanding have gone from fourteen million to four point five million, of course, we haven't done any multifamily deals just yet, we do have some in the pipeline that will increase this number, um, fairly quickly. Uh, but the single-family side, we have to get our volume up before we're able to re-enter the single-family bond market. But the financial advisors, like Kane Mitter and our other consultants, uh, Ms. Brown Russell has been helping, Mrs. Brown Russell has been helping us, uh, to rebuild the infrastructure we need in order to generate the type of value that we need to see in order to start issuing bonds again, and holding those assets on our balance sheet. So the next item, line item, you can see, in twenty-sixteen, we originated thirty-three mortgages for the year. Thus far in twenty-one, we've only done four mortgages. We do expect an uptick once we announce this green mortgage program. We have some families that are already in our pipeline, that we're, that are gonna work with us to pilot the program. We're also working with some developers who are building reconstruction units that are applying for the green mortgage program. So a lot of that front-end work is starting to go on now, and we expect to see some results as we move toward the latter part of the year. And then, uh, as it relates to the different types of assets that we have on our balance sheet, the single-family assets, those are mortgage-backed securities connected to those bonds outstanding above. We only have about, uh, we started out with fifteen million in two thousand sixteen, uh, that portfolio is, is winding down, and we have six point seven million of, uh, mortgage-backed securities left on our balance sheet. And there is a revenue stream tied to all of our mortgage-backed security issues. Uh, and then in terms of multifamily assets, uh, we didn't have any multifamily assets in twenty-sixteen. Today, we're at fifty-five million, and this is mainly, uh, accounted for by our pilot portfolio. Uh, so as we issue more pilots, we issue more bonds, the size of our multifamily assets will go up. And the important thing to keep in mind there, uh, is number one, we're providing some community impact by providing these pilots, but in terms of our financial sustainability internally, uh, these are forty-year contracts. So that's revenue for forty years that will come to Finance New Orleans, assuming we're able to maintain our position as the, the provider of these on behalf of the city. Uh, so three deals have gotten us to fifty-five million. You know, we expect the average size of these deals to be about fifteen to twenty billion. Um, and, and we think we can do upwards of ten of those every year. You know, a lot of things will be out of our favor, like the condition of the marketplace, but that pipeline we showed you earlier is a direct result of us just spending time with developers, we spend a lot of time on phone calls, face-to-face sometime now, since we're, we're getting back into, um, you know, the, the pre-pandemic ways. So we do expect to have a substantial investment in our multifamily portfolio. And in terms of affordable unit supported, uh, we didn't have any affordable unit support in twenty-sixteen. These three projects so far in twenty-one, um, uh, have supported a hundred and ninety-eight affordable units in terms of construction jobs, uh, seventy-five construction jobs were projected to be created by these projects, which are all underway now, and twenty-nine permanent jobs are to be created. So we're at the very beginning of these numbers, the other metrics that we're gonna be reporting out on. But I wanted to just give you a snapshot of some of the things that are going right for us, uh, to give you an indication of where we are, are we healthy as an organization, um, and what kind of springboard do we have, so? You know, I, I think this is a, a, a good start, there's a lot of room for improvement, we have a very, very long way to go. But the staff is completely focused, and, uh, you know, that's one of my charges to staff every day is to focus on making sure we're moving these numbers and, and providing that community impact. Um, so that concludes my report. Are there any questions from the board about these numbers or anything else that I've talked about?
No questions, just compliments.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And same here, here and no others, and I think, uh, myself and many other board members said it throughout this meeting, just complimenting you and staff on how, how you keep moving forward, how we set this new vision in our strategic meeting, and, uh, you all keep ticking away at it, so I look forward to it, I hope that jobs, uh, Ag does send that money to those green-baked infrastructure, and we get our, our share of it, so we continue to, uh, to move these and, and implement these developments that we have. Uh, if they don't have any other questions, is there any public comment?
No public comments at this time.
Okay, so if there's no other, uh, business questions or concerns, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, we are finished needing a adjourn, thank you all.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
All right, John. Thank you. Thank you.